Good morning and welcome to the August 20th County Commission meeting. It will be led by the Pledge of Allegiance by Ken McFarlane.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Ken. Reminder to silence your cell phones, please, and the meeting documents are next to Commissioner Kelly. And listening devices are available if necessary from Robert. With that, we'll go into routine action.
Item one is consider a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved. Second, a motion and a second to approve the agenda. Any corrections or changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item two are to approve the county commission minutes of August 13, 2013.
Move the minutes.
Second.
So a motion and a second to approve the minutes. Are there any corrections or changes? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item three are bills to be paid in the amount of $1,166,401.11.
Pay the bills with a comment.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Commissioner Barth?
Mr. Chairman, thank you. Amongst our bills today is about $300,000 to Correct Care Solutions and just under $300,000 for asphalt on a project.
Thank you, Jeff. Any other comments? Any changes? If not, those in favor of approving the bills say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item four reports the Register of Deeds official statement of revenue collected during July 2013 has been received and is on file in the auditor's office. Item five is personnel. A is to approve the routine action.
Motion to approve the routine action.
Second.
Motion and a second to approve routine action. Are there any questions for Carrie?
Lot of attempts. Going away.
Yep. Time of year. If not, those in favor of routine action say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
There are no application for abatement today. Item seven are notices and requests. We have three highway department notices. Item A is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for Project MC-50-300-118-1, 484th Avenue Bridge Deck Rehabilitation for the Minnehaha County Highway Department.
DJ, you have any comments?
Good morning, Commissioner. I don't have any comments unless you have any questions.
Does anyone have any questions, DJ? This is in the 2013 budget, correct?
Yeah, it's about $100,000 deck overlay project. And HDR was hired probably a month or two months ago, probably two months ago, to work on the design. And the design is complete and ready to work bids. Hopefully, we get some bids.
Motion to authorize the publishing.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to authorize the publishing of that project. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Item B is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for the purchase of a stainless steel conveyor for the Minnehaha County Highway Department. DJ Boothby.
Again, Commissioners, this is another item that's in our long-range plan budget and can answer any questions that you might have about the purchase.
Commissioner Hybarger?
Do we have a conveyor belt at this point?
We don't. No.
So they've just been pushing it up?
Right now, we just push it with a loader and we'll probably be able to store about a third more material with these conveyors or with this conveyor.
To the place to put it?
We have hoop structures, two hoop structures that we put our salt and our salt sand in. And right now, like I said, we're pushing it up with the front-end loader and so it's only getting about half the height that it should or that it could be getting. And so this will significantly increase our capacity, which will reduce our risk throughout the winter months in a really busy winter month because you're not always able to get salt from the distributors, from the salt lines down south. And so having that more salt on hand will give us a little bit more comfort.
Any other questions for DJ? We have a motion and a second.
I'll make the motion.
No, we don't have a motion on that one. Sorry.
I'll second it.
We have a motion and a second to approve, I'm assuming?
Yes.
Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes.
Item C is to authorize the county auditor to publish a notice to bidders for the purchase of two sport utility vehicles for the Minnehaha County Highway Department.
DJ?
Again, two vehicles that are budgeted in our long-range plan and can answer any questions if you have any questions.
Any questions? Commissioner Barth?
DJ, how old are the trades that you're planning on?
I believe they're 2010. 2010, I think I have that right here. 2010.
Commissioner Hybarger?
What's the mileage on those vehicles and the reason for trading?
93,000 miles and 92,000 or 91,000 miles. And the reason that we looked at trading instead of keeping them or giving them to a different department is one of them is starting to have mechanical problems and because the mileages are so similar, we're fearful that the other one might soon have some mechanical problems. And we talked to the dealership. The trade-in values right now are really high because they don't have a lot of used inventory. And so we thought that it would be better to go through that process rather than try to get rid of it by some other process. The trade-in values that they told us as an estimate was higher than we had typically seen on selling vehicles at the auction, so.
I think Dick was first. Commissioner Kelly?
Well, today's SUVs don't really have a big problem running 125,000, 130,000 miles. I know you answered why the trade-in deal, but why? Why the mechanical? Is that the one you aren't having any mechanical problems right now?
One of them we don't have, but the mileages are close. And so we have both of them budgeted for this year and we don't have any more budgeted for several years. And so we were fearful that if we didn't buy them when they were budgeted, when we requested to purchase them, when we needed them, if they weren't budgeted, that it wouldn't be approved.
Another question followed. You went to the state bid list and you went to the city.
Yep.
And you said you didn't find what you wanted. But if you were, for instance, to get a Tahoe four-wheel drive, just a standard, they're on the list, aren't they?
They are on the state bid. The state bid is not effective right now because they're not in production and the state bid has special order vehicles only. And so what the dealerships have all told us is that there's government pricing that's effective all year long and they can give that pricing to any vehicle. It's just a standard deduction on a list price, basically. And they can, they can look at any vehicle that they might have on a lot, for example, and give us that government pricing for that vehicle. Or they can also, if it's bid like this, they can use any dealer incentive or dealer sales that they have and whatever is cheaper, they'll put that price into their bid. And so by bidding it this way, we're, we're looking at both the dealer price and the state bid price and we'll be getting whichever is cheaper.
Well, how does the government price? You're saying that you can't even go buy one on the state bid right now?
Right. Yeah. Because when the, when the bids are.
Are you bidding, are you buying 14s or 13s?
The way that we have it written, it's just a new vehicle. Could be a 2012 that's been on the lot. It could be a 2013 that's on the lot or it could be a 2014 that's produced already. The way that the state, the state bids work, the state bids are released at like in October or November and that's for the next production year. And so like a Yukon, for example, might be produced only in January and February. And so you'd have to make sure you make that order before that, before it's produced, otherwise you won't be able to get it for the rest of the year. And then, for example, after that, the Chevy Traverse might be the next on the production line. Each vehicle is only produced for a couple of months out of the year and you have to make your order before they're produced, otherwise you'll have to wait until the next manufacturing process starts or you'll have to buy one off the lot that's just a standard vehicle.
And that's what you'll be doing is buying right off the lot?
Right.
Meeting your spec. All right.
Commissioner Hybarger?
I'm just curious about the mechanical problems because the trade-in value on these two vehicles must be close to $50,000 because I looked at. Well, what I, I mean, I just looked up online and a, and a new Yukon is about $49,000. And if you're trading in two and you're getting two more for 55, you must be getting a total of about 40 to 50,000 for those two vehicles.
The prices that we pay are cheaper than what they show online and the trade-in values aren't $50,000. It's less than that. I think it was like $35,000 or $30,000 or something like that.
30 for the two.
I think so. I don't have those numbers in front of me, but it definitely wasn't $50,000.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Barth?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, I think that our county should probably have someone that watches our whole fleet of vehicles and keeps track of, you know, the mileage, the maintenance costs, when they're due to have service, et cetera. I think that each individual department taking care of their own stuff leads to sort of non-standard treatment. And I plan to support this particular thing. I, I believe that driving in a business is different than driving your personal vehicle. And I know that the trucks that I used to have took a lot of, a lot more time. It wasn't just mileage, it was idling 25 below while you were out looking at something because you didn't turn it off in that case, whether when you had to get right back in. So I think the hours of operation are probably more than just the miles on it. And I, I think that they do get beat a lot more in, you know, off-road and down the ditch, et cetera. So I plan to support this.
Well, my comment, I think in reference to your remarks, we did implement a purchase-replacement vehicle policy. And I don't know how this fits into that policy because frankly, we ranked all of the equipment, if I remember right, Ken, based on use of service, years of service, depreciated value, those kinds of things for every vehicle in the county. And where do these fall in?
Yeah, we have not officially adopted a vehicle replacement policy as of yet in that. We have done some of the groundwork for that and we have ranked all of our vehicles. And what we did is that we took a, based upon a 100,000-mile cutoff, you know, as that would be the replacement. Then we ranked our vehicles. And we have quite a few vehicles that are at that 100,000 or above threshold in that hand. But as far as the adopting that this is when these will go, we have not yet done that. But we have done the groundwork to rank and inventory all of our vehicles to see where they would fall in that mix. And if we adopted a 100,000-mile cutoff, that's, we got a lot of vehicles to replace. We just do.
Commissioner Kelly?
Pardon me for straying off a little, but do we still have that million-mile vehicle?
The one that 900? I think we do. It was a, I, when I first saw it, I said, this gotta be a mistake. I mean, because when we did the inventory and after it came out of the highway, it was a truck and that, that had 900. And I said, this has gotta be a mistake. And somebody, and at the highway department, they said, no, no, this is, this is right.
Is it drivable?
I don't even know what vehicle you're talking about. I didn't know it. I didn't realize we had one. There is a vehicle that we had, I think from Excel Energy, that has a ton of miles on it. Maybe that one is it. It was a surplus vehicle from, from a utility company.
You're right. We did stray off.
Do you have a comment though on Jeff's comment? We're not necessarily volunteering to be that department that oversees all the vehicles by any means, but we are looking at purchasing some software in the next year or so that is a fleet management software. And if the purchase is done as an entity, a Minnehaha County entity, instead of a highway department entity, I would think that that would be available to other departments to use.
Darlene, I'm going to need your help in this because I'm having a senior moment. I thought we had a depreciation schedule that showed all the vehicles. It shows the annual depreciation. It shows the mileage. You were able to split that out of the total depreciation schedule that we do for the auditors?
Yes, I think it was about a year ago during the budget process.
Thank God.
No. Yes, I pulled that out of our fixed assets and then talked to each department about the mileage. And so we did put together a worksheet on that. It has not been updated and we can certainly do that. So, yes, we did pull something together last year on that.
Sorry, but I get a little nervous about approving stuff when we don't have a policy for replacing vehicles. Vehicles are a major part of our investment and I think that policy needs to be adopted before we move ahead. So I'm not going to jump on this one until I know for sure what the policy is and why we replace vehicles regardless of what department it is because of the, frankly, a dealer's sales option. So anyway, any other comments?
Well, I'll make, I respect your position, Chairman, but I'll float a motion to see if I get a second. I don't know if it will work, DJ, but I'll make a motion to approve the, the trade-ins.
Second.
The notice to bidders.
Notice to bidders, yep. Thank you.
And was there a second?
Commissioner Barth?
Okay.
So this will come back to us or not?
No. Well, on the.
The bid award.
The bid award.
If this passes, we'll solicit ads, bring it back to you for your acceptance or rejection.
Point of privilege?
Certainly.
If we pass the policy before we get this approved, would that assuage your, your concerns regarding the policy?
I would feel much better about that process. To me, it needs to be formalized. And I think that that's the reason why you put policies in place, the same reason why we put purchasing programs in place and why we use state bids and why we used city bids in some cases.
And that is in.
Yep. And that cooperative bidding process that we put into place this year has saved us a ton of money from an asphalt purchase and from some other issues. So, I mean, this is another part of getting purchasing organized in a more formalized basis. And I don't think it's the department heads responsibility. Frankly, I think that's administrative and it needs to be done that way. Do we have a motion yet? Yeah, we have a motion to publish the bid.
And I would like to point out, I mean, that, and DJ, at least with current policy for purchases of this size, you know, we do require that you do go and check and that the availability of these products either on the Sioux Falls website or on the state website and that prior to coming for a notice to bidders. And so we do require some statement in this, you know, that, that this has been in fact checked out and why this is not appropriate prior to going out for a request for bids.
And we've done that. And we've also checked the Minnesota state bid. And the vendors that we've spoken to, all of them will honor the state bid price. They're just saying that there's a chance that their own pricing will be cheaper than the state bid price. So we're, for whatever that's worth, Ken and I, we're in pretty good communication during the development of that draft policy. And I think that this, in general, complies with the intent of that policy.
Commissioner Kelly?
When we get this back, can we have the state bid price as well as the competitive bid prices to compare with?
That'd be interesting.
Again, this purchasing policy is a policy that needs to be developed and approved, evidently, to flag vehicles so that we, in fact, have something to use as criteria now based on just mileage, but how much it costs us to operate that vehicle because some of those vehicles, and I'm not going to pick on you, but some of those vehicles may have 150,000 miles on them before we replace them because frankly, the, the cost of operating and the cost of repairing or fixing is much cheaper than the purchase. And the depreciated value may be zero at some point in the near future. So I think it's important that the policy needs to be approved. So that's the end of my sermon. We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? To publish the notice to the bidders, correct? Any other comments, DJ? Commissioner Hybarger?
I just have a question. And that is when we get the bids in, how long can we defer if we have to until the policy is completed?
Thirty days.
Thirty days? Okay.
Okay. I think we're going to need a roll call vote.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Yes.
Bennigan?
No. Motion passes four to one. Thank you, DJ. We'll go to planning and zoning notices.
There are no planning and zoning notices today. The next item is a petition for compromise of lien.
Thank you, Cindy. Yep. This is on DPNO 28710 on the amount of $15,168.53. The auditor's office received an application to compromise a lien. The lien is actually something that was incurred between a husband and wife. Actually, the wife received benefits from the county primarily in the area of medical services. And they were both married. I believe the applicant was residing at 1600 North Drive, otherwise known as South Dakota State Penitentiary. And while he was there, she incurred some medical liens. And during the course of the marriage, ultimately, they ended up having a divorce. In that divorce, they actually split the amounts of the lien between both of them. And actually, the amount of the lien that was related to the medical services was agreed by the wife, the recipient, to actually carry those costs pursuant to the divorce decree. So that was actually reduced to a judgment and was adopted by the court in the divorce decree. And she agreed to accept all liability related to the hospital services that Minnehaha County provided. A check of the records at the Human Services Department shows that the applicant or the applicant's wife actually were married in 1991 and were divorced in 2011. They were primarily, the liens were incurred during the course of the marriage. There was an affidavit on file. I don't know if you guys had an opportunity to read it, but it basically memorializes what I described before as what related to the divorce decree. More importantly, and I actually went through the divorce decree, if you had a chance to read it, at paragraph eight, subsection G, it specifically lists the Minnehaha County lien. So both of the parties went in with their eyes wide open when it came to the dissolution of this marriage. So in regards to that, it looks as though the applicant actually did, in fact, make an effort to get in contact with us. And I know that Haughey was contacting at least the applicant for payment regarding the lien. Since their divorce in 2011, the wife agreed to the responsibility of this particular lien. And so there apparently are several different liens that are attached. This would be specifically adding the $12,385.32 would leave it against the applicant's wife and that the applicant would be solely responsible for the $2,783.21 that currently he is obligated upon. So I'll make the motion for the $12,385.32 to be removed from the applicant, but have it rest still against the wife that's consistent with the judgment decree of divorce.
I'll second that.
We have a motion.
And I think.
And a second. But I was looking at the, what the balance owing was not what we're, and it's $2,783.21.
Yes, sir.
Any questions or comments?
Ken's coming to explain where I screwed up.
Okay.
I'm just confirming that I did speak with the applicant's attorney yesterday and the applicant is saying that he will pay that balance of the 2783.21 and that in exchange for moving this over to one of the other three lien accounts on his ex-wife's name.
Yeah. Commissioner Kelly?
Don't we normally require income tax in a financial statement? But one concerns me is that there's no, he did not fill out a financial statement.
And he did put it on in the application. The reason he was, he did not do that is because he was not making it based on financial hardship and that. So he wasn't making his request based on financial hardship. He just simply says, you know, according to the divorce decree, this was a lien that she had agreed to accept because they were estranged during the time that this happened. He had no idea where she was, you know? So they were estranged for a number of years at the time this was done. So he didn't do it because of, he wasn't claiming any kind of financial hardship and the fact that he has agreed that if you do this, he'll pay off the 2783.21, the balance.
Any other comments, questions? Basically boils down to the fact that he will pay 100% of what he is legally responsible for, so, from my perspective.
So does the divorce decree kind of direct us?
No, not at all.
Not at all.
It doesn't at all. And that's a very good, I'm sorry. Go ahead.
Yeah, I would just say, under our statutes, while you are married, your spouse has a legal obligation to support you. And I understand they were estranged. Now, legality is aside and whether we could insist on staying against him in spite of the divorce decree, that's a different issue than as a policy matter, since they agreed to do this and what is offered in exchange, whether you want to exercise your discretion to do that today. But I just want to be clear that I don't believe that legally binds us, a divorce decree such as that.
Is the applicant here by chance? They are not? Okay.
In a practical sense, if we didn't agree to it and he got frustrated, he could bring a motion to the court for contempt if she failed to resolve this particular debt. There would be a motion. It had to go before one of our circuit judges. It'd be a extra work for some attorney out there as well as some other attorney and our judges. So it'd just clog up our docket. So to be honest, a bird in the hand is worth two in the bush here.
Any other comments or questions? I think we'll need a roll call vote again.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hybarger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Peckus?
Aye.
Bennigan?
Yes.
We got another one.
B?
This is on DPNO 58812 on the amount of $1,146.40. The auditor's office received a request for a compromise of lien. This individual actually has no real estate involved in the request. The lien is actually for public defender services that were incurred a couple of months ago in April. And the applicant has had prior liens beginning way back in 2006. And amazingly, and I did go through the payment history, he actually did pay off those liens at one point. But of course, he had some other, not brushes with the law, collisions with the law. And now he has a balance of over $1,200. But regardless, or about $1,200. He resides up in Dell Rapids. He is unemployed due to a disability. He has only one source of income, that is his social security disability, in the amount of $730 per month. If we were to resolve this, he would be able to live within his living expenses for rent and utilities. And of course, he does apparently owe some child support. The applicant is requesting a release of the lien regarding the current balance with no payment. He asks that the commission consider and recognize that he does have a good track record, which I acknowledged, and that due to his current financial situation, he's unable to make any other meaningful payments towards his balances. However, you know, obviously, we have a precedent established that will take 50 cents on the dollar. So given the fact, even though he's on disability, I will float a motion for $573.20, which is approximately half. He would like it released without any payment, but looking at the information, I'll go haves ease with him. We're never going to get any money out of social security disability because it's judgment-proof, but I'm still going to float a motion for half in this particular instance.
Thank you, John. Appreciate all the work.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second for a settlement of $573.20, correct?
Yeah.
Commissioner Kelly?
Well, again, we don't have an income tax return to verify just the information he gave us and I cannot support it until we see that.
Mr. Chairman?
Commissioner Barth?
Dick, he may not have made enough money to file an income tax.
Well, then I want to see a statement. I, we're just taking his word right now and I don't buy that.
Did he file taxes?
Did he file taxes?
No.
Yeah. I've dealt with individuals on social security disability, and they don't usually have to file income taxes. But yeah. Dick's concern is legitimate.
It is.
Commissioner Hyberger?
Am I remembering correctly, too, that if they don't pay that five hundred and some dollars in a year, it goes back up to the eleven?
That's correct.
I have one question. When do we send these to the collection agency?
Eighteen months.
It's typically based on the kind of a lien it is. I mean, depending if it's a human services assistance lien or a legal lien. Typically, if it's all legal liens, we try to get those to the collection within eighteen months. If they're, other than that, I believe it's three years.
Ken, stay. Let me just clarify. You said that he did not file a tax return, that you verified that?
I talked to his mother on that one.
Okay.
At some point, and I don't wanna do it now, but I think we need to talk about the policy of when these get sent to the collection agency because frankly, the other comments that we hear frequently is, I didn't know anything about it. So if you wait three years, we'll let them know sooner.
Well, and one of the reasons that you do that is because on the human services lien, it's very specific on the application form of the acknowledgement that the lien is in fact created for the value and that there's a repayment. I mean, that's right on the application form when they do that. And there's an acknowledgement that they sign off on.
We've seen a lot of forgetful people.
We do.
Conveniently.
We have a motion and a second to approve a balance of five seventy-three, twenty. Is there any other comments or questions? Let's do a roll call again.
Commissioner Barth?
Aye.
Hyberger?
Yes.
Kelly?
Aye.
Pecos?
Yes.
Bennigan?
Yes. That's amazing. We have unanimous votes on two of those.
The next item is opportunity for public comment.
Anyone has any comments that they would like to make in reference to anything that is not on the agenda? We would like to hear from you this morning. Does anyone have any comments? No one's coming forward, so we'll go to item ten.
Item ten is a public hearing to consider an application from All Occasions by Hy-Vee for a special sale liquor license to sell alcoholic beverages at a reception at Crook's Gun Club, North Country Hall events on September twenty-eighth, two thousand and thirteen. The application has been reviewed by the Sheriff's Department, State's Attorney's Office, and the Planning Department, and there were no objections reported from any of them. And Mary Lux is here from All Occasions to answer any questions that you might have about the occasion or the license.
Good morning, Mary. Does anyone have any questions for Mary?
Can you, how much is the license?
Fifty dollars and fifty dollars for the one day.
For the one day?
For the one day.
No one has any questions? Mary, do you have any comments? Sometimes it's just better to be quiet, isn't it?
I have a question. Well, yeah. It's at Crook's Gun Club. It has nothing to do with guns. It has everything to do with the wedding. So-
Does the shooting begin?
No.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have a question for Cindy here. Cindy, on the one-day deal, you have to have a liquor license somewhere in the county, is that right?
Correct. And All Occasions does through Hy-Vee and T. So they have the actual state liquor license. So they are eligible for a special event license to serve at different locations.
Now, if you just were having beer and wine, would that be a lesser licensure requirement or?
No, it's the same. You still have to have a South Dakota state license in order to sell on a different location and have to obtain a special event license for that.
Giving it away is no problem.
You can get a consume and blend license, which still has to come before the commission. You still have to approve that.
Okay.
You're getting to be an expert on liquor.
I study every night.
Never win those conversations. Any other comments or questions? This is a public hearing, so if there's anyone from the audience who would like to speak about the application, we would be happy to hear from them. Anyone wanna make any comments besides Jeff? It appears not, so we have a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
A motion and a second to approve, I'm assuming?
Yep.
Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item number eleven is to authorize the chairman to sign an agreement with Infrastructure Design Group of Sioux Falls for preliminary engineering work on bridge structures fifty dash zero six zero dash zero eight nine and fifty dash zero six three dash zero nine zero located in Grand Meadow Township. Shannon Schultz.
Morning. Commissioners.
Shannon, do you have any other presentation to make?
Shouldn't answer questions. It's pre-routine action. It's two bridges that are built in the thirties. Very likely will qualify for listing on the National Register of Crossed Story places. So there will be some additional environmental and permitting involved on the front end. And we're glad to get it going ahead of time. So in case these permits are prolonged, we will not miss completion next year.
Thank you, Shannon. Anyone have any questions for Shannon?
Mr. Chairman? So you're expecting to build that, complete it next year?
Two thousand and fourteen. Yes.
Any other questions?
I'll make the motion then.
Thank you.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the agreement with the design group. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, nay. Motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item twelve is to authorize Planning and Zoning Director to sign the notice of intent on behalf of Minnehaha County to participate in municipal separate storm sewer system program. Scott Anderson.
Thank you. Scott Anderson from the Planning Department. And you may recall that on July sixteenth, Travis Hall, my planning intern and I, provided you with a briefing on a new program, the MS four program. And as Cindy indicated, that stands for multiple separate storm sewer system. Basically, it's a engineering, a diversion program required by Department of Environment, Natural Resources on how we deal with storm water in certain areas of the county. EPE has identified two bodies of water that are considered impaired. Those are the Big Sioux River and Skunk Creek, and their watersheds. And this is an attempt to improve the water quality that goes into those watersheds. We have prepared a notice of intent for your review, and that has been provided to you. We are required to acknowledge our intent to participate in this program by the end of the year, by December thirty-first. I brought this forward to you relatively soon after the briefing, so it's all still fresh in our memories. But I'm asking for your approval to sign the notice of intent and return that to Department of Environment, Natural Resources. Once that notice of intent is filed with Department of Environment, Natural Resources, we have five years to fully implement our program. This will allow us in the Planning Department time to create the footwork or the base of the program and start augmenting the way that we're going to implement that through education, public awareness, through our internet site, and eventually, a permitting process that we will need to go through. So I'll be glad to answer any questions. And Travis is here, too. He did a lot of research on this, and so he's probably the MS four expert, being a planning intern. So I'm thankful that he worked so hard on this as well.
Any questions for Scott or for Travis? Commissioner Kelly?
Assuming this is a country of local control, which is becoming an oxymoron, do I understand that we don't have a choice? That, what happens if we don't do this? It's just a-
I asked Doug Baldwin, who manages this program. He is out of Rapid City. And just as a side note, I hired him right out of college, and he was one of my planners when I was over there. He indicated that if we decided not to participate, this would be forwarded to the Attorney General for their consideration and whatever course they chose to take on this. But it is a requirement.
Okay. What happened to local control?
Mr. Hyberger?
I think from our conversation in July, this is, you did mention this is a five-year project, but we don't need to reinvent the wheel because it sounds like there's other municipalities or entities out there that already have rules and plans made up for this. And it'll be just a matter of searching them out and making them fit Minnehaha County.
That's correct. And we're also lucky that I think we have some internal resources. Shannon, from, Shannon has emailed me, I think he's back or still?
Yeah.
Yeah. He has some experience with this and had some ideas. And so I think there's a number of resources that we can use in the county as well as locally to get the program up and running. But the first step is the notice of intent. And then we sort of work together, start putting our program together and implementing that in however is gonna best suit the county. And I think there's even some potential that we can dialogue with the city because most, all of the areas within the city's joint jurisdiction, zoning jurisdiction. So there may be some opportunities to work directly with the city public works or whoever administers it in their office, and we could maybe do something jointly together. I know that's what Rapid City and Pennington County, that's the way their program operates. However, they have a little bit of a different, they, the city has a total plating control in the three-mile or in their joint jurisdiction, which we, we have a different operation here where the county basically reviews and operates the joint plating jurisdiction. So I think there's some opportunities, some possibilities out there for us to, to make this work on a number of different levels with different entities.
Just a comment. It appears to me that we have to go to all the work of preparing this so that the state can file, so that the state can do a report and look good. We get the cost, they get the glory.
I wouldn't disagree with that, but nonetheless, it has landed on our desk, so.
I understand.
Commissioner?
Scott, what kind of financial impact will this be on your budget?
Well, definitely, the, the financial impact will be, I think it'll be tiered over that five-year program where the initial cost is gonna be, you know, man-hours of researching, calling other departments, working internally with, let's say, the highway department and their engineers, with IT, because we're gonna be, ultimately, this is going to be a lot of it web-based for public education, where we will be creating a website or a location on the county's website that's gonna say MS four. We'll be putting informational, putting information, brochures, whatever on there. That's gonna be the first step. Then secondly, or ultimately, we're gonna get to the point where there's gonna be permitting. And then we, then there will be definite, definitely, or potentially, more costs associated with that, depending on how we lay out the program. I mean, if we're lucky enough that we can include the city and have them maybe participate in this in some fashion, there may be less costs. But nonetheless, there is going to be costs with permitting because we are gonna be obligated to, this is gonna be another layer of permitting that's gonna be implemented on development within the area that's identified. And whoever's gonna have to do that review and inspection is yet to be determined. But there will be design review, and there probably will be inspection once, as-built inspection once the facility or the holding pond or the detention basin is constructed. You're gonna have to go out and verify. And in four years, who knows what they might add to this for reporting requirements to here. So it just never changes. I mean, it never ends, and it's always sort of changing.
Travis, do you have any comments to make?
Not a whole lot. Just, I did send the map, and you will notice that the map is largely within the city of Sioux Falls, and there's a likelihood that if they go on an annexing spree or something like that, we could possibly have no area. So it's something that we really need to work with the city of Sioux Falls on the most. They won't, I mean, everything is obviously within that two-mile radius. But I mean, we have five years, and who knows what that boundary's gonna look like in five years. So it's something we have to stay on top of. And it's some, and the map will change every census year, so.
Thank you, by the way, for your internship. We appreciate your support, that's for sure. Any questions for Travis? Shannon, do you have any comments that you'd like to make since you have some experience?
Of course, my career didn't have MS four permits. It's basically a drainage permit. It's an opportunity, frankly, for the owners or the administrators to kind of a user fee, if you will. And typically, these permits are broken down, and that really is the end game, is a permit. It's a user fee. If you have a one-acre site or a one-acre denuded area, you usually trip some kind of a permit requirement. And then you can also charge permitting fees and break even on your labor. If you wanna use it as a revenue stream, you can, of course, adjust that and kind of pick up the cost for development. In practice, when Scott sends over developments for review to our office, we're basically enforcing what's gonna be included in a permit. And that is drainage will not exceed existing conditions. Existing runoff rates will be met or continued. So that requires using some kind of a pond. And really, what, the end game from the EPA side of things is they're protecting the resources. So basically, it's an erosion control plan requirement. It's a runoff requirement, a little more analysis done for drainage in terms of flows to the property, through the property, and off the property. And so really, the end game is a one- or two-page permit and a fee. And it will be enforceable, you know, whether or not the erosion controls are in place and working. And frankly, it's a good practice, in my opinion, to educate the public. Most contractors work in cities that require similar permits, so it won't be a new thing for them to comply with. And most engineers are well-versed in this kind of thing. The DOT has many standard plates for these kinds of things. So implementing will not be, I don't think, any kind of a large effort. It'll be mostly education, put the policy in place, and then put the permit together. So I don't think five years is gonna be any kind of a challenge, probably achievable in one or two.
Thank you.
Let's pace ourselves. But I think Shannon brought up a good point, and that is that I think a lot of this is gonna, it will fall upon some kind of an engineer. Because I am not licensed or, and to be honest with you, I don't have the mathematical skills to calculate flows and actually then review those plans to make sure that they are going to meet whatever storm event EPA is gonna require. So, you know, eventually, it will require someone that has a very technical engineering background to be able to go back and calculate those to make sure that those plans are correct. Because we will ultimately, and I think Commissioner Kelly's hit on this, it's gonna be our responsibility to have to monitor this, and it's gonna be our, you know, it's gonna be our potential for making error. And you don't wanna make that error, so you're gonna need to have someone that really knows what they're doing to review those plans, the permit, to make sure that really it's been designed correctly. And Shannon indicated that, of course, a lot of these engineering companies have done this often and are very familiar with it. But nonetheless, I think we still have to be judicious and make sure it is what it, what it says it is and what it is, and it's built as it says it's gonna be built. And that's all, you know, boots in the field, man-hours, reviewing permits, going out and inspecting it, and then maintaining a file. Because I will guarantee you that you, we will be audited. I mean, it, it just happens. FEMA comes in and then they audit. And so I'm assuming EPA or someone from DE and R will come in and audit us to make sure that our permits that we've issued are in order and accurate.
Commissioner Pecos?
I had lunch yesterday with Jim Schmidt with the Lincoln County, and I see a lot of this extends into Lincoln County. So obviously, they're gonna have to vote on this as well.
That's correct. And they were at that meeting in Canton on June twenty-sixth.
And I can tell you that the tenor of our conversation was a concern on the part of Lincoln County working with the city of Sioux Falls regarding water discharge. So I think in northern Lincoln County, they have huge issues. And I noticed that the areas that they are concerned about, they'll have some joint jurisdiction, but the vast majority of it is not on this particular part of the, it's not listed, so.
Good point. Any other comments? If not, excuse me, do we have a motion?
I make a motion to authorize the planning director to sign this notice.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the planning and zoning director to sign the notice of intent. Any other comments? Commissioner Kelly?
I'll support this, but once again, we don't even have a dog in this fight, and yet we're going to be burdened with all costs, and I'm sure that at some point, there's going to be either another employee necessary or a consultant, and can't win.
Commissioner Pecas?
Just to dogpile on that, I would say that, given the fact that there's going to be more discharge into northern Lincoln County, the inevitable response from most of us that, you know, the city of Sioux Falls is discharging into northern Lincoln County, it's not us, we're buying into this, so it does become our concern.
Commissioner Barf?
I think this is an example, though, where our staff should cooperate with Lincoln County's people on this issue. I think it's a great opportunity to surround the city of Sioux Falls with county concerns.
Agreed.
I agree, and frankly, Shannon, since you're already a quasi-expert, we may have to change your job description a little bit, so I think not only sharing resources with Lincoln County, we may have to share resources with the highway department. Sorry. Go ahead, Scott.
And, and the five-year timeframe, I mean, we do have five years to implement this, which will give us adequate time to research all the possibilities, working with Lincoln County, working with the city of Sioux Falls, whatever entities are out there, but I just think it's best to get going on it right now, I mean, we'll get the letter, the notice of intent signed, and then we'll be able to start researching and working on that to see where this ends up. I mean, it really is a work in progress, because we're starting it from scratch, from ground zero up, so.
Thank you, Scott. We have a motion and a second to approve the signing of the notice of intent. Any other comments? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.
Item 13 is to review submittals in response to the request for proposals issued for financial advisor services. Ken McFarland.
Commissioners, pursuant to your authorization, we issued a request for proposals for financial advisor services as we take a look at refinancing our 2004 certificates of participation. We issued that proposal, and on Monday, August 12th, we received responses from three firms for that work. Those firms were Doherty and Company, the PFM Group, and Springstad, which I believe is out of Minneapolis. As I detailed in my briefing memo to you, we have those proposals in our office on file, and that, but the material, if you'd like to review the entire proposal, but what I did give you in your packets was the firm's cover letter stating their interest in doing the particular work, their timeline for completing the work, and a copy of the fee schedule that we asked each firm to provide. As you see in your packet, Doherty and Company did, in fact, provide a timeline for the refinancing, and that's there for your review, and had a proposed fixed fee of $15,000 to do that work. The PFM Group also included the timeline for the refinancing and their marketing plan, and had a proposed fee not to exceed $31,000 for the work. Springstad did not include a timeline for refinancing, nor did they provide any information regarding fees. Again, the full proposal is in the office for your reviews, if you would care to do Bob Litz, the auditor, is, in fact, out of town this week, and he has made the request that, that you hold off on accepting any of the proposals, and that can give you this week to review anything or to ask any questions, and perhaps consider a review on August, or award on August 27th. I see that Doherty and Company is here to answer any questions that you might have regarding their particular proposal, but we scheduled this as a review for, for this, this work that we requested.
So anyone have any questions for Ken? If not, Woody or Tom, would you like to make any comments? No?
Mr. Chairman, in the absence of their comments, I have a question for Ken. Is there any substantial substantive reason why we should defer action?
And that...
Bob is going to come back and read us his paragraph, and...
You know, as I looked at, you know, if you look at the work plans submitted by both, it's a fairly aggressive work plans, you know, they've taken a look at at least 10 to 12 weeks to complete all the necessary work in order to take advantage of any refinancing opportunities, you know, quite simply, the longer you wait, you know, the more unknowns may in fact be out there, and that, in my personal opinion, I think the information submitted and the proposed fee schedules that have been submitted speak for themselves, and that, and quite frankly, I think you could, in fact, award or accept a proposal today, and that if you feel that you need to, to meet this aggressive timeline for the refinancing that both firms have done, and that, but again, I, I bring you the fact that the auditor did, in fact, request that you wait one week, because he would like to be there when you do that, except, when you do that award.
Thank you, Ken. Any other questions for Ken or for any of the vendors? Commissioner Kelly?
Well, just a comment that, looking at the chart that's on your, in your packet on what's happened to those interest rates, would think Commissioner Barf has a very valid argument there.
Thank you. Any other comments?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
You know, if there is no overriding other issue, I think that we, in the, we should move forward expeditiously, and I would, I'm impressed with the Doherty proposal, and I will make a motion that we accept their proposal.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Any other comments? Commissioner Heiburger, I'm sorry.
I was just going to comment that, you know, although I respect the office of the auditor, I'm not going to read this any more than I already read it this week, and so by deferring it for one week, I'm not going to read it twice, so I just feel like my decision has already been made by looking at the proposals, and why would you spend an extra $16,000?
Thank you. Commissioner Pecas?
Well, I'm just mindful that this person's going to be working very closely with the auditor, and if he asks for it to be deferred, obviously, one week is merely one week, however, I do understand that time is the fire in which we burn, I think that it's important that we move forward, because our auditor said he does need the financial backup, and this would help facilitate that, so I'm mindful of his request, but I also understand that there's not a lot to really go with here. One bid is double what the other one is, so I think we need, we can easily pull the trigger on this.
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Heiburger?
I don't remember if you correctly, for sure, but I don't think there were travel expenses either, and Doherty is here in town, so I don't think they're going to charge us a whole lot of gas costs to drive over here as compared to flight costs.
We'll pay you a mileage from downtown to here.
We put zero.
Any other questions? If not, do I have a motion?
We do.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve, I'm assuming, the Doherty and Company quote. Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion unanimously passes.
Can I make a question?
Sure.
Sure.
Now that you've done that?
Don't mess it up, Woody.
The one issue that is going to be the controlling factor is who's bond counsel. Are you going to use the one that's done the deals so far or not? Because if you don't, you're going to have to take requests for proposals, and you're going to spend another month or something, you know, period of time to do it.
I, go ahead, I think I already have the answer to that, but...
Right, Woody, Woody, we're going to, you're the, your office now is going to be handling that, you're going to make your recommendations.
I just got up to make that recommendation.
Well, okay.
You stay with the current, the current counsel.
Exactly, exactly, and so absolutely, put it in writing and let us know. Yep, send an email.
But we also negotiate a fee.
Sure, you know, make a recommendation, I think that's what you need to do. Is that, did I?
No, you are, there's no reason to re-educate bond counsel, everybody understands the bonds, they understand the purpose, they understand the refunding and the refinancing, they already have some ideas on what needs to be done, so to go outside and look for another attorney when we have somebody that's already experienced, I think is incorrect, so.
Mr. Chairman, do we need to have a motion on that?
I think they need to, well, they've already told us verbally, I think we could do it from a verbal request.
And it's Lindquist and Venom, is the person that is requesting a motion?
I'll make a motion for Lindquist and Venom. No, you don't want a motion. Doesn't matter.
Now, we got a problem, we have two attorneys talking about this.
Actually, three.
Okay, you have a motion?
I'll make a motion for Lindquist and Venom, but I'd also like to hear what...
I'll make a second one.
Okay, we have a second. Kirsten, you have an opinion?
As I understand the agreement that has been adopted today, is it not correct that it's within the scope of the contract and proposal that we just verified the selection of bond counsel? Then I'm not sure that, that the separate motion is needed, however, there's nothing saying you can't take one, so that's all of what I was going to say.
So you do agree with John?
In part.
You've got a motion on the table.
Maybe, maybe I'll, I'll adjust it. I'll make a motion to verify that it was Lindquist and Venom.
I love this.
You're the chair.
I think this is a professional services contract, it's part of the notice that we requested, they've made the recommendation, we've made a motion and a second, I believe we'll vote on this. Those in favor of hiring, I forgot their name or any...
Lindquist.
Lindquist and Venom, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, no? Motion unanimously passes. Woody, get to work.
We will.
Thank you, sir.
Item 14 is to authorize acceptance of a proposal from TSP to prepare specifications, drawings, bid documents, and construction administration for a public safety building elevator refurbished project. Lloyd Olson.
Good morning, Commissioners. Lloyd Olson, Director of Facilities. The 2013 capital improvement schedule has $80,000 in it to provide refurbishing of the public safety building, and this is the elevator that is used by employees, it's services detox area, and some of the jail intake area, technologies from 1975 or even possibly the late 60s when the building was built, parts are hard to get, it's become unreliable, and it has been, but we haven't seen the heavy use that we've seen when the jail was previously on second floor of the public safety building. I requested a proposal from TSP, they're the original company that constructed the building, familiar with the building, and they've provided this proposal for $4,650, and they'll provide the specifications that we need, plan drawings for the bidders to look at, so that we're, they're all on the same page, and also construction administration. And I would recommend accepting this proposal.
Questions of Lloyd? Mr. Kelly?
This is the elevator right by the control room?
No, it's not, it's actually...
Or is this back in the Sallyport area?
It's, it's back in what we would call the intake area of the jail, so each landing is in the jail area.
But it's not used for prisoner, it is?
But it is used some for transportation to detox.
Oh, okay.
Back and forth between the jail.
Okay, I know what you wanted to say.
Any other questions of Lloyd?
I'd make a motion to approve this, sorry.
No, go ahead.
Second.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion and second. I think because this is a draft, I think the motion needs to contain language, it's as if the original comes in with any changes, and it needs to be brought back to the commission.
Absolutely. Second.
That was interesting. We'll check the minutes next week.
Yeah, we will check the minutes. Sean Irvin, I believe, from TSP was going to try to make it today, but obviously didn't, so.
Yes, and it's my hopes that that proposal is here in something other than a draft or the original document.
I think as long as we have the draft, and the motion is, if there's any changes, we will bring it back, we can approve it with the draft as proposed. Any other questions? If not, those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thank you, Lloyd.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes?
I'd just like to compliment Lloyd on replacing the bike rack here at the county administration building. The new bike rack is much more substantial, previously, you could swipe the bike rack just as easily as the bike, and Lloyd often functions without the accolades due, but he really does deserve them.
Thank you. Thank you, Lloyd Mark.
Jeff, Dick and I stole your bike, just for a joke.
I found it at Wiley's.
Maybe now we can have a bike-to-work day.
Okay, let's get back to the agenda. Any liaisons reports? No liaisons reports?
Well, I attended the SDACC executive committee for Jeff, he was unable. They talked about Senate Bill 50, or 70, I'm sorry, and, but the other thing they decided is they're having a lot of difficulty in Spearfish with accommodations, with space and everything else, and I think they pretty formally decided to go to Sioux Falls and Rapid. They're going to bid it every year, which I think is foolish, because I'm afraid, and I've, I warned them that they need to get out four or five years ahead, you know, they're used to every, every community bidding, even though they can't handle it, and then there's no problem getting in September, but now, now it's going to be a serious issue with two facilities like that competing. I frankly think they'd be better off to go one year here, one year there, and just, just have a standing deal, but anyway, they will at least get to that, so we can pretty well count on the convention either being in Sioux Falls or in Rapid City.
Thank you. Any other liaisons reports? Again, Senate Bill 70 is the judicial changes in the trickle-down effect of the prisonerment issues that we're dealing with. Commissioner Barf?
Just in regards to Senate Bill 70, The Economist magazine had an article about prison population in California, and I'm going to read directly here, it says, "California has not reduced numbers simply by setting people free, rather, it has set a lot of non-serious, sent a lot of non-serious offenders to county jails instead of state prisons in a policy called realignment." Anyway, I just thought that was kind of interesting, they were operating at, at one point, over 200% capacity of their state penitentiaries, now they're down to a mere 135%.
Thank you, Jeff. I believe that this is one of those issues where they were leasing people earlier, so they had room to put the new people in, so...
It also says that crime has gone up in the places where they're being released.
Thank you. Any other liaisons reports? If not, we'll go to the new business. I would like to discuss a little bit about the convention that's held in the middle of September. I think generally speaking, we do not meet that particular week because of either travel to the convention, which is in Spearfish, or attendance at the county commission meeting, so any comments about that? Any wishes? Commissioner Heiburger?
I think Robert is going to be at the convention, I'm assuming, and Ken will be out of town that week also.
Well, I would make a motion that we plan on not meeting that date, which would be September 17.
Second. I agree. Any other comments? If not, do we need a motion to...
That'd be, that'd be great. Chair. That'd be great.
Okay, a motion. There's a second. To not meet on September 17th. Those in favor, say aye. Opposed, motion unanimously passes. Any other new business? Any old business? Any old business? No. If not, I do need a motion to go into executive session for contract negotiations and personnel.
That's my motion.
Second. Those in favor to go into exec sessions for contract negotiations and personnel, signify by saying aye. Opposed, nay, motion unanimously passes. Thank you.